In response to Governor Baker's Declaration of Public Health Emergency and the Related Emergency Executive Order dated March 12, 2020, Town and City Public Meeting shall meet remotely until further notice. This meeting will be recorded and will be posted following the meeting. Please also note, we are live streaming this meeting tonight on the Situate Community Television Facebook page. This will be a live stream. It will be, should be identical to the recording that we will post following the meeting, usually the day after. Please be advised of that. I know during the public comment period, we do ask for name and address and/or affiliation, so just be aware of that. Public comment will be made available through this Zoom as we have in the past. Under the Reaction emoticon, you will select that, raise your hand, and I will call on you. You can also email me questions@pgates@sit.org. With that being said, I'd like to call the Situate School Committee Meeting, Monday, August 17, 2020, to order at 6:12. Via roll call vote. Brangelini?
Yes.
Limblom?
Yes.
Long? Long? Long?
He's trying.
Gates, yes. Hayes?
Can you hear me now, Peter?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And Hayes? All right, so Vote four to zero. I'd like to call this meeting officially to order. Mike Hayes is still attempting to get on. I think we can move forward. It is 6:13 at this point. First item on the agenda, our acceptance of minutes. We have two minutes dated June 25th and June 27th. Any comments or questions? If not, entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the June 25th, 2020 School Committee minutes as presented.
Motion by Long?
Second.
Second by Limblom. Gates, yes. Brangelini?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Limblom?
Yes.
Hayes? All right, four to zero. Motion passes. June 27th minutes. Any questions or comments?
Nope.
I move to approve the June 27th, 2020 School Committee Minutes as presented.
Motion by Long?
Second.
Second by Brangelini. Limblom?
Yes.
Gates, yes. Long?
Yes.
Brangelini?
Yes.
Hayes? Four to zero. Motion passes. Moving right along into old business, Situate Safe and Strong Reopening Final Plan. Before I hand it over to Superintendent Burkhead, just wanted to make a few comments. First of all, following last week's School Committee Meeting where Superintendent Burkhead, or actually each of the School Committee members, majority of the School Committee members, as well as Superintendent Burkhead, wrote personal statements. I think by now we all recognize the influence and impact that Superintendent Burkhead's open letter had. I'm not sure if I can say it officially went viral, but it went viral from a Situate perspective. I thank Superintendent Burkhead for his open and honest words and for sharing that. I think that it more than served its purpose. I believe it was shared by the majority of school committees across the state. In addition to that, a lot of our discussion last week was around a matrix of who determines when it's safe to go back, and that's what the School Committee tasked the district to do. I don't know if it had anything to do with Superintendent Burkhead's letter or our comments, but miraculously, the following day, on Tuesday, DESI and the state issued a matrix. I'm sure that many folks that are on tonight, we have a total of 249 participants, may have questions about that matrix. We are not going to answer any questions. It's too new. We need several parties to review it to determine how we're going to best utilize it moving forward. But I wanted to acknowledge the fact that we are in receipt of it. It is being reviewed, and it was ultimately the, I guess, missing ingredient, I think, in terms of moving forward with the opening plan. So again, I want to thank Superintendent Burkhead for his letter, his time. He was on all the different news outlets, and it was nice that Situate got some positive recognition in terms of this. So with that being said, I'd like to hand it over to Superintendent Burkhead.
Thank you very much, Chairman Gates, and I just want to thank you and the School Committee for your support and also our community for allowing me to share my thoughts on the last School Committee meeting, and I felt confident enough that I had the support of our School Committee and community to share that letter. I also believe, as I teach my own children, that you have to stand behind your convictions, so I'm proud of Situate, and I'm glad we did that, and we're continuing to forge on. So I guess I've also got a section on the School Committee update tonight that will get into a little more detail on where we're at, but as far as the plan goes, we're continuing the next phase of applying details to each component of the plan, including the in-person, hybrid, and fully remote, red and blue. So everything from specifics, entering and exiting the building for children, seating, busing, curriculum, the whole nine yards. So I'm excited to report that that work is going on, and there's a lot of good people committing to that work. And so we're into that phase, so we can report probably more detail about that next week. As far as the metric goes, I just want to share, to follow up with what Chairman Gates said, this is from Commissioner Riley that was issued on August 11th. It was the night or the day after our meeting. And so, and just in summary, for those who are not sure what the metrics is, these metrics will serve as a guide as to whether schools should open using full-time, in-person, hybrid, or remote models, and will also support future decision-making if the impact of COVID-19 requires us to switch between educational models through the school year. Following the release of these updated metrics, we are providing districts and schools with initial guidance on how to interpret them for school settings. These guidelines were developed in consultation with our infectious disease physicians and other public health reports, experts, excuse me. So it looks like there's more information to follow, so I just wanted to share that in summary, in part from what the commissioner sent me and to share with the public. I think that's all I have right now on that. I do have, you can hear me okay, Chairman Gates?
Yes.
Okay. I have this sign flashing on my computer that says your internet connection is unstable, so as long as you can hear me, if it flashes that you are unstable, I will be sure to share that with the public as well. But right now, it's just my internet connection.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so this is just for those that are following on the agenda, we are going to have a leadership report that's going to come following, and it's going to maybe answer a lot of your questions, but at this point in time, it is the first point in the agenda for comments, statements, or questions. Please, we're going to try to limit this as much as possible. There's been, you know, a lot of questions. I think that there are many answers, but not necessarily appropriate to continue to ask those at the School Committee Meeting. We'll do the best that we can to do that. If you do have a question, please use the reaction emoji at the bottom to raise your hand, and I will call you and ask to unmute your line. All right, we have no questions. All right. With that, we'll move on. With that, we'll move on to new business, the 2020-2021 School Committee Meeting Dates. It should be in your backup, effectively, basically meeting almost every other week for the rest of the year. We can obviously add additional meetings if necessary. Please take a look at the backup and let me know if you agree to it, and then if so, I will take a motion.
There's no questions. I move to approve the 2020-2021 Situate School Committee Meeting Date Calendar as presented.
Motion by, sorry, motion by Long, and we have our, hold on. All right. Motion by Long, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brangelini. Gates, yes. Limblom? Limblom?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
No. I had Hayes on here unmuted, and now I'm muted again. Brangelini?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero. You'll see again all those dates in your backup for those in the audience that are interested. Those will be posted on the website for your viewing enjoyment. Not sure, next day or two. All right, next item on the agenda is Leadership Reports. Superintendent Burkhead?
Thank you, Chairman Gates. I'm proud to report that our principals were hard at work implementing the next phase of our plan once it was approved, and true to our form of transparency and inclusion, they held forums at the school level with both staff and parents separately, and the turnout for those forums was huge and well-received, so I want to thank the principals for their continued hard work and dedication and for conducting those forums. They'll be presenting shortly a little summary of those forums for you tonight. And again, thank you for the staff and to our community for the large turnout, support, interest. Not only were more specific building-based questions asked, but there was a lot of conversations about solutions, and I think that's a good place to be as we head into the home stretch for schools to open. We also sent out a short family survey similar to the one we sent after the initial presentation of our initial draft to families regarding, now that they know the plan, to start hybrid, whether they would be choosing the hybrid model, a fully remote model, or other, meaning homeschool, or choosing a different private school or other. They had an option to fill that part in as well. So that survey, I just want to encourage our family members out there to make sure you check your inbox and fill it out. It's due tomorrow, and then we'll be having that, those results out to the community and to the School Committee as soon as possible. And then finally, I wanted to let folks know that we're in the process, with the help of our own Seth Pfeifer, who's works for Situate Television. I want to thank Seth for helping us in all the stuff he's been doing for us, but he's been going, he's going to be meeting with our principals, met with me earlier today, going from school to school to check out the classroom spaces and going to do a video so that folks that aren't able to obviously come into schools get a visual of what our classrooms are set up to look like with six-foot distancing, and so that, and then as we get closer to school, we hope to do another video of, you know, traffic flow in the buildings, signage, variety of other safety precautions that we're in the process of, that Bob Dylan and his great team are in the process of implementing right now. So this is the first of more than one videos, and I want to thank Seth for that, but that should be out for next Monday School Committee. Next part, I guess, of my presentation is just turning this over to, we also have Dr. Dutch here tonight to give an update on our PPE purchases, an update, as well as our principals to give an update on how their week went with moving our plan forward. So we'll turn it back over to you, Chairman Gates.
Great, thanks. Any questions from the School Committee on Superintendent Burkhead at that point before we hand it over to Dr. Dutch?
I might have missed it. Just one quick question, Mr. Burkhead. Did you, you might have said this, but for the surveys that went out to families, did you say what percentage you've received back yet? How many are still waiting for?
No, we haven't calculated that because it went out, I think, Thursday or Friday, and tomorrow's the deadline, so I haven't checked that yet. I can have that tomorrow.
Any other questions?
I just respond to Ms. Brangelini one more time. Sorry. Yeah, just to follow up, we sent a reminder out today as well, three emails, so we're looking to get more people to finish it up.
And Superintendent Burkhead, I'm not sure if this is appropriate for you or for Dr. Dutch, or maybe for another time. I'm just, I'm thinking about it now. And as you mentioned, you know, if folks are choosing to homeschool their children, how that potentially impacts our district in terms of funding? I don't need an answer right now, but if you or Dr. Dutch happens to know potentially how it would be impacted by dollars received from the state, I think that's just helpful information for everyone to understand.
Yes, thank you. If Dr. Dutch doesn't have that answer, I'll have it for you at the next meeting.
Okay. Sorry to drop that on you. I just thought about it now with your with your comment there.
Great question.
Okay, so Dr. Dutch, your your report?
All right, I'm going to try to share my screen.
Okay.
Can everybody see that?
Yes.
So I wanted to talk a little bit about the money that we've spent thus far, or at least what we've purchased in regards to making sure that our schools are safe for students and staff. And they fall into these four categories: PPE, instructional supplies for those who will be working remotely, modifications to our building, and then cleaning supplies as well. These range from things that were ordered before I started. Some of them have come in. Most are due within the next couple of weeks. Very few of them have we been reimbursed for at this point, but we're confident that they all qualify for reimbursement through Plymouth County through the Federal Cares Act and the guidelines that are stipulated there. So first, as it relates to PPE, these are the things that we've ordered or are in-house in the instances where numbers are warranted and worthwhile to share with you. I've done that. Where we have finalized quotes or invoices, I've shared those dollar amounts for you as well. This is not all-inclusive. There are some other items that have been ordered that are less significant, both in importance, but also in their dollar value. So I'll just, I'll go through these very quickly. Some are self-explanatory, so I won't spend a lot of time on those. The anti-fog masks with the windows for the mouth so that someone can see for students who have difficulty or for teachers who need their mouths to be seen while they're talking through, in the classroom or through the remote process. The custom masks are the, excuse me, the Situate School District masks. They have a Situate logo on those, so we've ordered those as well. We've ordered masks that are of specific size for students and staff, two separate orders, for adults and the high school students. And then masks for smaller children in the lower elementary grades, as well as face shields for some students as well. We've ordered 300 Plexiglas shields. The Plexiglas shields are for the teachers, particularly in special education teachers, the specialists, school psychologists, guidance counselors, folks who are one-on-one with a student to, and need to be a little closer than the six feet. The shield along with a mask provides them with a little extra safety. And then isolation gowns for nurses and some of our special education teachers for the students who may need a little more close monitoring and support. Then going on to instructional supplies, the large-ticket items, we've ordered Chromebooks, $91,000 worth, and laptops, $195,000 worth of laptops, and in this environment, those are both reimbursable according to the Cares Act. Some building modifications. We've ordered signs that can be placed on the floor and on the walls to make sure everybody knows where to go. Reminders to create a culture of safety and wearing a mask and maintaining six-foot separation, those sorts of things. We've installed partitions, and are in the process of installing partitions in the offices to keep the safety of our secretaries in front of everyone's mind. We've, at the request of Mr. Burkhead, we've looked at adding outdoor classrooms, so we've ordered six 20-by-40 tents, one for each school, and 12 20-by-20 tents that we will own, so we'll have them long-term. And those can be used as outside classrooms. They could be used as space for eating. They could, the smaller tents could even be used as an isolation area if a student does have symptoms of COVID. We've ordered air purifiers, again, for the smaller spaces, the nurse's office, where the school psychologist may be, guidance counselor offices, where the ventilation may not be as good as it should be. We're in the process of ordering UV light systems for our rooftop units so that as the air passes through those units, if there are any particles of the virus that are within those air particles, they would be killed by the UV light. Every unit vent and every controller has been inspected. We've been notified as to which are not working at their maximum, and those are also being repaired at this point in time. Once those are all repaired, probably starting, I think, on the 24th of August, we are having a company come in and do air quality testing and providing us with certification that we will post on our website. And these are all reimbursable through the Cares Act as well. Cleaning supplies, much more numerous than this, but I thought I'd focus on the large-ticketed items. We have hand sanitizer by the gallon, which will be in every classroom, in every office, and lots of extra supplies as that gets utilized. We have the electrostatic sprayers for fogging, the classrooms, the bathrooms, the hallways, as necessary. We've ordered 25. Those are also for the buses so that those could be disinfected on a regular basis. We'll be ordering some more because we've actually done a trial run to see how long it takes, how long they stay full. To try and manage that a little bit, we're ordering some more of those as we speak. Cleaning supplies, everything from Lysol wipes to all kinds of cleaning supplies, specific for protection as it relates to virus, hospital-grade cleaning materials to make sure that our schools are safe. Disinfectant for sprayers, which is a little different than the Clorox 360, which is not Clorox-based. It's not a bleach. That's simply the manufacturer. So you can see we've spent quite a bit of money there. So I hope that gives you an overview of how we've spent our money. I'm going to try to unshare my screen now.
There you go. Nice job.
All right. Happy to answer any questions from the committee.
Great. Thanks, Dr. Dutch. I think that was very helpful because, you know, we talk about all these things that we need, but then to actually see what we've purchased, I think, really helps people understand exactly how things are moving forward and what we're doing to ensure a safe return to school. Any questions from the committee? Ms. Brangelini?
Just a quick Cares Act funding-related question. So if, do we know, is it on the table that we get another, so is this all the Cares Act money that we have, or do we have enough so that, say, I mean, for example, there were, you know, we keep on track with Situate had zero cases this week, so what if, what if everything goes really well, and we end up staying in school, and then it's, you know, December or January, so how long do we predict this set of purchases will last us if we can do that? And then if we need more, do we have the funds through Cares to order a second round? Or are we waiting for more money for that?
Well, we don't, none of the money has come to us. We have to make these purchases, expend the dollars, and then request reimbursement from the town, who then requests it from Plymouth County. It's a fairly lengthy process. Most of these items are one-time purchases, the tents, the Plexiglas, the chemicals and whatnot, and the disinfectants, the sanitizers. We should be able, with what we know the town has as a resource and what they've indicated they need for themselves, I feel like we're going to be okay if, you know, if there isn't any additional money coming from the federal government, and I don't know if that additional money would go directly to Plymouth County again, or if they would be going through the state. So the long answer is, the short answer is, I'm not sure of what resource will be available long-term, but I'm comfortable with what's available, that we'll still be able to purchase some additional things to ensure everyone's safety.
All right. Just want to make sure that, you know, that teachers and administrators have enough to worry about, so I don't want them to worry that they're running out of hand sanitizer in this particular year especially.
Yeah, we've got a lot of it on stock right now, so I think, feel free to use it as they need to feel safe.
Excellent. Thank you.
Ms. Limblom, any questions?
No, I just want to thank Dr. Dutch for that report. You know, it certainly gives a good overview of everything that we're doing to make sure the schools are safe. Well, thank you.
My pleasure.
Mr. Hayes, any questions?
I did have one. When the unit ventilators are inspected and repairs are completed, and then the air quality tests begin, what is the standard to which we will have before teachers and kids are allowed in that room? Is there a federal standard, state standard, industry standard? Do we know?
There are a variety of standards for parts per million of different materials, and it depends on the material that we're talking about. There are also standards as it relates to carbon dioxide that's in the room as well. The metric that the unit ventilators are looking at, though, The, the metric that the univentilators are, are looking at, though, primarily is the number of air exchanges in a one-hour period. And, and we're targeting 10, 10 air, 10 full air exchanges in a one-hour period in every classroom. And if it doesn't meet that standard, then we've either got to modify the controls or the device itself, or not utilize that.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a, I have a follow-up to that. I know I'm a little bit out of order, but I'm gonna follow up Dr. Dutch. If, if, I don't know how, if each school has one, two, three, four, however many units they have, if one of them fails, realistically, how long does it take to either replace or to bring it up to standard?
Every classroom has its own univentilator, and it depends on what's, what's caused it to fail. It determines how long it takes to repair and whether the parts are in stock for that or not. We've got a very good relationship with a couple of HVAC companies who seem to put us on the top of the list based on my, my quick analysis in, in 12 days. And that's, and that's a great thing, because that's, it's important.
Great. Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Long, questions, comments?
Just one question. Have we, I know you said we, we had purchased a number of Plexiglas face masks. Have we looked at getting Plexiglas, we can either put around desks or at the end of a teacher's desk between the teacher and the students? Are we not looking at taking that approach?
We did. We, we've purchased 300 Plexiglas shields, which are basically a three-sided shield. The only side that's open is the side where the teacher sits, and then it's Plexiglas on the other, on all three sides. And those are available for every teacher, should students be able to do this.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Dr. Dutch, I think that, again, that's really helpful to, to see all the things that we're doing. I think that it, it does address a lot of concerns out there, that we are making progress. So I appreciate the, the level of detail that you provided. As things change, or as our purchases increase or decrease, just be sure to let us know. But that's really helpful.
I'll be sure to keep you updated.
So thank you. And before, before this, did you have any idea of air exchange details? Or is this your first dealings with air exchange?
Having come from a tech school previously, I, I have pretty good knowledge of, of HVAC systems, but not, probably not to this level.
All right. At least you have some. That's great. Thank you.
Not far.
Great. Any other questions for Dr. Dutch from the school committee? All right, seeing none, we will move on to the principal's report. We, as the principals speak, if you are not able to unmute, just raise your hand and we will unmute you at that point. So I'm not sure, Superintendent Burkhead, do you want to introduce each principal? And we can make sure that they have the ability to speak.
I'm actually not sure who's going first. They kind of divvied that up, so I'll have them introduce themselves, depending on who's going first. I will share the slides, and then, and then they can start when they're ready. So I'll, I'll share my screen, and then they can begin.
Okay.
If that's okay. Okay.
Again, principals, I tried to make you co-host. If I did not, just raise your hand, and we should be able to unmute you. Okay.
I am unmuted. Hi, Julie McHillip, I'm the principal of the Hadley School, and I will be kicking off the principal update this evening. First, after your vote last Monday evening, we got started right away with volunteer staff meetings. All four elementaries invited staff either on Tuesday or Wednesday to come, and many, many staff members did attend. We took that time to try to update all of the staff. Although the numbers in school committee look pretty large, we thought there might be a few that didn't quite make it and hear all the information, so we gave them an update. We also started to talk about some of their concerns, some of the, their worries, and some of their excitement, and how we could start to tackle these things together. From there, towards the end of the week, we started, we had an additional volunteer meeting with all of the staff, where we started to talk about the, the nuts and bolts of how are we going to reopen school. Overall, the staff were very excited. I know I can speak to Hadley. Many staff members also attended a parent forum, because they wanted parents to know that they're in this with us, and that they also are excited to see kids and be back. So I will turn it over to my colleague, Tracy Riordan. Hope.
I might have to, I don't know. There we go. Tracy.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Tracy Riordan, I'm the new principal at Wampe Tuck. So I'm just gonna talk about, follow up what Julie talked about, about our staff updates. So in each of our staff meetings, each principal, all six of us, have a document called Reimagining Our Schools. And that document was really just cut and pasted from the Safe and Strong reopening document. We just reimagined that document to fit each one of our schools. So in it, we have gone through all the things that we need to do to, that are specific to each one of our schools. So that includes topics like safety protocols, arrival and dismissal procedures, support services, remote learning, how are we gonna keep our remote kids connected to our school communities, different PD opportunities? What are the student and family orientations going to look like when we come back to school? How are we gonna keep our families and our staff well through all of this? What are our mask breaks going to look like? What are our outdoor classroom spaces gonna look like? How are we gonna use them? So those, so basically, we're looking at all the logistics that would be specific to each one of the buildings. And so we've asked our staff to, for volunteers that would like to start brainstorming all of these areas, and we've all had a very good turnout of people willing to volunteer their time. And I, I know each one of the elementary schools have already had volunteering meetings of people starting to work on these documents. So the documents are shared with all staff members, so even if they're not working on it via Zoom or in-person, everybody's having an opportunity to put their thoughts and their questions and their ideas into the document. And this is what we'll use when we reopen on September 16th.
Excellent. Thank you. Next, next principal?
I think it's Rebecca Long is going next.
Hi, Rebecca Long, principal of the Jenkins Elementary School. I'm gonna talk about the overview of the parent forum. Among our elementary schools, we had a range from 65 to 80 families attending our forums. We also had staff which joined parent forums, also staff that were not necessarily parents of children in the building, just staff that wanted to join in. We shared an overview of some sample schedules as far as the remote learning schedule, what that would look like as far as the hybrid model schedule, clarified questions around the Wednesday remote learning for all, and the primary focus, questions around safety and cleaning protocols, scheduling, intricacies of those, along with the social-emotional learning and connections to, for the students to be able to connect to their classrooms, communities, and their school. And I will turn it over to Donna for the takeaways.
I'm Donna Moffitt, I'm the principal of Cushing School, and I get to have the last word as far as the elementary principals are concerned, so it's always a good place to be. We, as principals, sat down and talked about our parent forums. Obviously, there were a lot of concerns that were specific to each of our buildings. However, we did see that there were some trends across all four elementary schools that we're, we are addressing. We had some safety procedures and protocols which are being put into place. We're actually starting to work with our teams to put a lot of that stuff into place through our reimagining documents. There was a lot of conversation in regards to how do we keep our remote students who have chosen to be in the blue phase, the blue model, connected to our classrooms? And so, you know, and it's a genuine concern that we are working with our teachers and with our, you know, our staff, and together across, to make sure that we have those connections to the classroom community, that students have an opportunity just to have, not just to their teachers, but to also have connections with their peers that may be in a hybrid model or other peers, you know, in different grades, in the same grade level. So there's a lot of conversation and work that is being worked on right now with that. We also, there was a lot of conversation in regards to the mask breaks. And, you know, whether children are going to have snacks or not, and those are being discussed now, but, you know, when we have mask breaks outside, and we're very excited about the fact that we're gonna have the tents to be able to do that, you know, having an opportunity to have those children have a quick snack outside while they're taking their break, maybe during a read, a lot of things. So those are some of the areas that we're focusing on, because especially at the elementary level, it's really important. Two and a half hours doesn't seem like a very long time, or three hours. But when you're a first grader boy, you know, you're in at nine o'clock, and by 9:30, you're hungry. So we want to make sure we have, we have things built into our routines for our students. And then there was a lot of conversation and takeaways from the parent forums about cleaning between the cohort sessions. And that is, again, being wrapped into our procedures and protocols of what's that going to look like? And we not only have discussed it as a leadership team, but we've been working very closely with our custodial staff and with Bob Dillon to have more conversations about what are the procedures that we're going to be doing? Because we want to make sure that, you know, we're, we're getting those touchpoints and meeting the needs of what needs to be done before the second cohort comes in. So those were our takeaways from our family forums, those, those are the major focuses.
That's great. Thanks, Donna.
Hi, everyone. I'm Ryan Beatty, I'm the principal of Gates Middle School. Last week, after the school committee voted the Safe and, Safe and Strong reopening plan, our staff met on Wednesday morning. We had over 50 staff members participate in our brainstorming session. I would, I would say 25 staff were in person, 25 were online. And we had, you know, the, the start of good discussions around some of the protocols that we're going to need to be figuring out over the next couple of weeks in order to ensure a smooth and safe transition back into the building. Many of the topics have been shared by the elementary principals, but each building is different. And so we, we talked a lot about kind of just the idea of how are students going to arrive? How are they going to enter? How are we going to move between classes so that we don't end up looking like that school in Georgia where the hallways were overcrowded? And so we're kind of talking about, you know, what is the best way, the safest way to have students move? Because when they get to the middle school level, they are not in that self-contained classroom, and they do move schedule-wise frequently. So one of the big decisions that we've made is that our core classes, ELA, history, science, and math, will be one cohort, so students will remain together for four of their blocks. Students take seven classes at Gates. And we're looking at exploring different cohorting models for the other three blocks, whether that is cohorting by world language, whether that is increasing these staggered dismissal times in between classes. But our working group is going to continue to work every Wednesday for staff who would like to volunteer to be a part of the decision-making. So we will have more concrete details as that time, as the time gets closer. But those were some of the topics that we spoke about. We also had small working groups talk about just what does it mean to provide a synchronous learning experience for all students? And good conversations were, were started, and we're looking forward to continuing those conversations as we continue to work towards the end of August. The following day, we met with 130 parents from students in grades six, seven, and eight. It was a really exciting morning. We shared the basic overview of what Gates is going to potentially look like come September in terms of scheduling, in terms of transitions between classes, again, our arrival and dismissal process, and just an overall safety protocols that we will be following when we do return to school. We talked a lot, I would say the majority of questions did stem around that full remote model. And we shared the information that we have at this point with the understanding that that is the model that we're continuing to work on. And we're committed to providing students, all students, whether they are students who are opting for the hybrid model or the full remote model, with a solid, strong experience that replicates a typical Gates Middle School experience. Lastly, we will be hosting additional parent forums. We did record our, our one from last week. We know that everybody has different schedules, particularly, in particular during this time, where some parents are working from home. But we will be altering our morning, afternoon, and evenings, but we are committed to recording them and sharing them out. So if you have not had an opportunity to see it, it's on our Twitter page, it is on our Facebook page, and we did email it out through school messenger. So please feel free to reach out to us with any questions that you do have. But another parent forum will be upcoming soon.
Great. Can I give it to Beatty?
Hi, I'm Lisa McGuire, the principal of the high school. We also held a number of meetings last week, the first being a staff meeting where we were able to meet with 54 members of our staff, and then followed up with numerous phone calls and emails discussing the same things as the other schools, their facility, safety, student protocols to the high school. But the biggest thing that we talked about that was unique to the high school was our, our hybrid schedule. And we had a lot of feedback asking to rework that schedule to facilitate fewer transitions in the school day and to allow teachers a little more concentrated face-to-face time so that they can initiate those conversations and connections between the in-person and remote learning. After looking at a number of schedule options and having dedicated staff working on different options and, and putting forward ideas, we realized that the best option for the high school is this high school's regular schedule. It allows teachers to teach three or four classes per day. It allows students to take fewer classes with fewer transitions than a seven-period, which we presented to you last week, that was approved in the original plan. And it also allows for just a smooth transition between any of the levels or phases through the school year. So now that that is in place, we do have teachers working on the reimagining schools through a common document, and we'll catch up to the other schools with our volunteer committee that will be organized in our next staff meeting. As far as our family and student, we were able to have a student meeting as well, and we'll continue to do that. Our conversations were very specific to some of the high school needs. While we had the same issues and concerns and questions and discussions about arrival and dismissal, transitions, mask breaks, protocols, and some of those procedures, we have some, some high school implications of our schedule and of COVID-19 on our testing, particularly our SATs and AP testing and MCAS for graduation, our grading and GPA calculations, considerations for an open campus and allowing students to leave during study halls, and the freshman transition, as well as the college application process, which occurs quite quickly for some seniors with early decision applications being due six weeks after school starts on the 16th. We're waiting anxiously to hear from the MIAA on sports. We're committed to running some of our clubs virtually to maintain those social-emotional and co-curricular connections. Parents and students are very anxious to hear more about the remote learning plan, and we'll offer information to parents tomorrow at a second forum that we're running in the evening. And again, they'll hear about those reduced transitions in classes per day. We also met with students, and they had the same concerns. Will we have activities? What about SATs? What about MCAS? What about college? What about freshmen, you know, starting the year? So we'll continue to work with students every week through the remainder of the summer to get them ready for our opening in the fall.
Great. Thank you. Thank you to all the principals. Before I open up to the school committee, I just want to thank you all for what appears to be a very coordinated effort to deliver on the Safe and Strong reopening plan. I appreciate the fact that we did vote on the hybrid option last week, and you took advantage of that timing and put a lot of work and effort into getting to where we are today, just one week later. So I appreciate that. I, I can see it. I commented to Superintendent Burkhead today that from afar, it looks like the, the like the, the principals are really on board and really trying to deliver exactly what, what's a first-class education in the midst of a pandemic. So thank you for that. That being said, open up to the school committee for any questions. I'll go with Ms. Brandalini.
Thanks. Um, I guess I just have more comments than questions. I know everything's very much kind of in a work in progress and I can appreciate that very much. I think it, like Peter said, I just echo that it seems like everybody is working really hard and you guys really jumped right on this room, right out of the gate last week, which was wonderful. It was great to see so many staff being a part of the planning process. And, you know, I think that's important since it's their day-to-day classroom. So it's in, in their work environment. So it's good to see that they're coming up with good creative solutions to things that they know exist in their own buildings and classrooms. I think it's good, I think people really still need more information on the remote learning kind of at every level. And I know, again, that that's being worked on. And that, like you had said to Dr. McGuire, the, the reduction of the transitions and also Mr. Beatty mentioned too about middle school. I'm interested to see what solutions you all come up with to, to really bring that down a little bit. So good to see that that's, that's all being worked out. So thanks so much for the updates.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Hayes?
Thank you, Pete. And I want to echo my appreciation for all the hard work, all the principals are doing. And it's, it's just mind-boggling effort and, and task to get, get schools open and kids learning. And greatly appreciate the principals and the staff and the parents working hard on this. The only question I had was, Dr. McGuire, and again, I think it's the most difficult for you because of, you have the biggest school in town and, and it's not an easy situation. But correct me, are you leaning towards or, or just been discussing the normal high school schedule? Is that, is that what you said? Pete, you have to, and Lisa, yeah?
Thank you. So yes, originally the schedule that we proposed in the safe and strong reopening was a seven period. So we would see every student every day. We realized that that's a little bit too much. Would like to stick with the seven period, drop two. So that brings students down to five a day. Would also like to move H block to remote session on Wednesdays. So that would be another reduction of the number of students that teachers would see in a day. So cohort A would be in Monday, Tuesday. We would run our regular schedule, cohort B at home, and then flip Thursday and Friday. So in our seven-day rotation, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday would be days one through four. The next Monday would be day five and we would continue that way.
And the reason, and the reason I ask is because I have been told by some, some veteran teachers that they were looking, looking more favorably at, at other models that were on the table or could be on the table. And is this, is this a done deal at this point? Or is this where you're leaning or?
We have looked at a number of schedules and we've been working with teachers and department chairs on feedback for those schedules. I apologize for my dog outside. They, um, there are appealing qualities of every schedule that we've looked at. And there are negatives to situating how we do things for every schedule. We feel like the consistency in our schedule and the ability to minimize those transitions in the schedule we already have is a benefit. It's already a negotiated schedule that we know works for teacher preps and their, their duty schedule. So it eliminates a lot of those unknowns. At this point, we feel pretty strongly that we need a schedule to be able to move forward and fill in all of those unknowns around it. Our schedule gives us the, the greatest ability to do that. Teachers have worked on it. They teach either three classes or four classes a day. That's much better than the seven. And we can really find the unknowns rather than looking at other schedules. And we have looked at every schedule across the South Shore. We've worked with groups of high school teachers. But I think at this point, we need to move forward.
Okay. It's just that the concerns that I had heard expressed over the weekend were that, you know, this was, department heads were pushing, but that a lot of veteran professional teachers felt that they, they needed, that this plan needed more time. But so I was wondering if you could comment on that?
Pete?
The feedback that I received from staff across the board was that for seven periods, they wanted to reduce the number of periods in a day, the number of students in front of them in the day, and they wanted to reduce the number of transitions. And our schedule has done that. So as for what we've delivered on, those have been the biggest asks without modifying the schedule in a way that takes away the connection time and the, the kind of face-to-face time for students. They also didn't like the 45 minutes because they felt that was too short and were able to increase that to 62 minutes and still preserve a solid passing time for kids. I do think our schedule delivers on what the feedback was from teachers.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about the dog.
You never, you never have to apologize about a dog.
Mr. Long?
I just want to echo the same sentiments. I mean, my wife attended the Gates and Hadley sessions because that's where my kids are. And she said they were running very well. I've heard the same feedback from the other schools as well. So I think the transparency and the amount of detail that our principals are putting out has just been great and a huge benefit for the, for the community as a whole. So just want to thank the six of you for all the work that you've done over the past, you know, week plus everything else you've been doing over the summer. Because it's just, I think it's been a huge impact towards moving forward and getting to September. So thank you for all that.
All right. Thank you. Um, yeah, I just, I have one question. It's kind of a silly question, but have, and I'm not sure if it's for the, for Mr. Beatty and Dr. McGuire, but I'm assuming it's not an issue, but are we going to have a traffic issue, assuming we have much lower bus ridership? Obviously, we only have half the kids coming to that complex, but I'm assuming the majority will be driven in a car. Is anyone looking at that, just to be sure we don't have any issues? I'm assuming it'll be fine. I just want to make sure that someone's on that. And I'm not sure where that falls.
Sure. So I, I think every, each fall, we work with the Situate Police Department, specifically their traffic department, and kind of figure out what is the best traffic pattern. I know at Gates, at least, it's taken us years to kind of figure out what is the best one. And we have figured it out. And so I think we'll be working again with Officer Billings as we get closer to the start of school, knowing that the start time is a 15-minute difference between Gates and the high school. We are confident, though, that with 50% of the students in the building, that it will be pretty similar to how it was last year. But we're looking to gain input from both the Situate Police Department and the feedback we're getting from the parent survey of who will be riding to school and who will be taking the bus. So we are, it's, it's definitely on agendas and that's, you know, we want to make it smooth. And every year, it takes a week or two for everybody to kind of get acclimated to it. But we always work it out. And I think this will be.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions by the committee?
One more, if I may, Pete?
Sure.
And it's really for everybody and for Lisa, Ryan, and the elementaries. And then I think it was Donna or Julie who talked about, you know, getting a first grader into the building at nine o'clock and they're hungry at nine thirty. Could you each explain what's going to happen with feeding kids in each school? Lunch or whatever?
Sure. Being that it's the hybrid model, what will happen is there will be student, we naturally do snack in the middle of the day anyway. So we are working on schedules of how our outdoor classrooms and our spaces are going to be utilized so that teachers will be able to circulate through in order to have those mask breaks for our students as well as giving, offer them the opportunity to have a snack should, you know, be what is in the best interest of those children in front of them. So teachers will have a little bit of, they, actually, teachers are going to have a lot of input in regards to how that schedule is going to work. And it's really going to be in the best interest of their students. We also have, and we're still working on those students who are high-need students who will be with us for a full day. Those will be the children who will be having lunch with us. Again, we're really would love to have everybody eating outside. Children love to picnic and as well as adults. And we are having some, we're working on our staffing because it's also the time where our teachers are going to have their lunches and their prep. So we're working on our schedules and staggering the times to, to help maybe with some of our paraprofessionals. We, we have lunch hostesses at the elementary level. So, you know, working with that as well. So that's kind of still a work in progress. But that's how we are envisioning it right now. And as we continue to work on our reimagining documents, that will become more solidified at the elementary level of what it's going to look like for each building. Does that answer your question, Mr. Hayes?
Yes, it does.
In addition, if we have children who are in need and for a lunch, but they are not staying all day, we will have the opportunity for brown bag lunches to go home, either in the middle of the day to have lunch, or at the end of the day, and if they're in the second session, to put into the refrigerator and have before they come to school the next day.
Okay. Ryan or Lisa?
At the high school, I know that we have about 425 students who will be in each cohort. And we'll have three lunches to bring that to about 140 students per lunch. We plan on staging the cafeteria and the small gym as indoor spaces in case of inclement weather. And we'll also have outdoor eating space in one of our provided tents. And we do plan to work with David Stevens and Food Services to have the grab-and-go meals available, pre-purchase and pre-order. So I think that we'll have a pretty smooth transition. We may change up how we send students to lunch. Typically, it's by department and we'll probably stagger by classroom so that different classes are going to different locations at different times.
Great. Thank you.
At the middle school, we will maintain our, our lunch schedule offered by grade. So we will have three lunches, very similar to Dr. McGuire. We will offer the grab-and-go lunches. We're working with the amazing Dave Stevens, who is really working hard to put together a plan which limits, you know, the contact of purchasing lunch. At Gates, we can seat 130 or 100, you know, 130 to 150 students in the dining commons with six feet of distance. There will be no eating in classrooms at Gates, and we will be offering outdoor dining to select populations.
Great. And Bill, if I could ask you, has anything that is under consideration and discussion will not affect staffing levels in our food service department?
Mr. Hayes, not at this time. Still, our primary goal is to maintain our full staff. And in a hybrid model, we're, Mr. Stevens has been working hard on all three models to get students fed. So at this time, the answer is no to that.
Great. Thank you.
I will, I will follow up and say, a fully remote model, there is, there's no guarantees on the potential of, of layoffs in that situation.
Understood. Any other questions or comments from the school committee?
I have a couple of questions, Peter. For Dr. McGuire, the, so since the, the kids are taking less classes during the day, maybe could you clarify that they're not necessarily taking, like they're, they're still taking the required classes? So they're not going to be like short-changed?
Of course. Yes. So we were originally running seven periods in a day, all seven. Our original schedule is a seven-period drop two. So the maximum they would take in that scenario is the, is the five a day. And that's if they don't have a study or something like that. A, a full schedule would be five a day for students. We are exploring if our seniors don't need every credit to graduate, if there's some flexibility for them to alleviate a class and possibly go home late, early, or arrive late. But that would be kind of case by case and for seniors. Otherwise, everyone would be taking a full course load.
Okay, great. And for Mr. Beatty, the, Dr. McGuire had kind of referenced the clubs. And I know a big thing in, at Gates is the interest-based clubs. Has there been any discussion on those?
Sure. So our interest-based clubs are not currently in the schedule that we have put forward. We do have an advisory block as part of that. And I think our advisory coordinator and our interest-based club coordinators work closely together. They both kind of, the, the pillars of both programs are personalization, connection. Though I would, I would encourage and then think that we can somehow, you know, be thinking about how do we kind of rebrand this block, whether it's called interest-based clubs or advisory, kind of put the two together. You know, why we can't offer a, a typical interest-based club like we normally do is kind of the mixing of students. And that is the, the one time during the week at Gates where it's the most fun, but it's also the most chaotic and kids are everywhere. And in order to, you know, keep safety at, at the forefront, we are going to have to kind of forego that until we're in more of a, you know, more of a traditional setting. We will be offering, as Dr. McGuire said, extracurricular activities remotely for those advisors who would like, who think their club or activity could potentially be run online. And we're hoping that many people, many of our, our staff members are willing and able to kind of deliver a, a remote extracurricular, because that's one of the greatest things about our school is that program.
Yes. All right. Great. Thank you. And I will also want to echo what everybody said about, I can't even fathom the amount of time and energy and just even begin to like wrap my head around how much has to go into planning everything that you guys have been working on. So thank you so much.
Pete, may I have one more quick question?
Only if you turn your light on.
I only have one light in this room.
Okay. Go for it.
So when we would, this is for Ryan and Lisa, when you're talking about running through the normal schedule and, and each scheduling, it's my assumption and belief, I think, that band and music are part of core curricula that will be included in all those various functions. I mean, how are you going to get that done is, I'm sure Jim's working hard and everybody's working hard on that. But band especially, I think, would be difficult. But.
Jim has been working with the teachers, both in art and music, K through 12, and they all have unique needs. I think the other schools are running their program remote where our students are scheduled into it as one of their seven courses. We are committed to running it in, as part of our schedule. And we will have to adhere to the recommendations that came out from DESI. So we are anticipating that band will be outside 14 feet socially distanced, probably using that large dent under inclement weather. But they may be looking like a marching band. So we're going to do what we need to do to, to hold true to each of those courses, band, PE, art, foods, all of the recommendations and the requirements to run our classes safely, but to still offer them for kids.
Great. Thanks.
And at Gates, band will be offered remotely, similar to the elementary model.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the school committee through our principals? All right. I, I, once again, want to thank you all for your hard work. I don't think we've ever had a situation, we've had all school principals speak at a school committee meeting, but it's really well received, especially by this committee, I think, that you've done all this difficult and hard work and also had time to prepare and attend our meeting. So thank you very much. And I know that at least for me, I'm getting some questions from interested or concerned parents, and I'm referring them to you all as principals. So I know you're getting probably some more emails than you're used to, but I appreciate you handling those concerns. Okay, moving on, subcommittee updates. As with all the changes that we're going through, we will need to be reviewing. Um, as with all the changes that we're going through, we will need to be reviewing, um, a variety of our policies. As a result, the policy subcommittee will be meeting, uh, tomorrow, Tuesday at 3:00 PM. If you're part of that policy subcommittee, you will, you would have received an invitation. Also collective bargaining, um, that will be continuing Wednesday, August 19th. Uh, this is the last, uh, spot in the agenda for comments, statements or questions from the public. If you do have a question, again, please go to the reaction emoji and raise your hand and I will call on you. Uh, John Fitzgerald. You're up.
Thank you. I appreciate you letting me speak. I'm a teacher at Gates. Uh, I've been in the district for 20 years. It's been my privilege to serve the kids in Situate. Um, other than having my own kids, the best thing I've ever done in my life is choose to become a teacher. I believe firmly in it. Um, unfortunately, some of us are in a pickle. My wife is also a teacher in Canton. I live in Braintree. My son's prescribed hybrid model is two mornings per week. My wife's hybrid model is different than my hybrid model. I am happy that we can open the schools to serve the kids of Situate. However, it's putting some of the professionals in a predicament. My predicament might be taking a leave and that is the last thing I want to do. Because if there's one thing I love doing every day, it's driving down to Situate in the morning. Knowing that I'm going to be in front of a classroom with kids. I don't want this current situation to take that away from me. But as much as I love the kids in Situate, there's two little boys I love more. And I need to do what's best for them. I know in Marshfield that there have been some childcare provisions discussed in order to help teachers out. I don't know if that's something that's on the table to help out the teachers in Situate. I know about 25% of us in the STA have kids that are 12 or younger. We want to be in front of the kids. We want to do what's best for them, but we also have to consider our own families. So I don't know what sort of flexibility that you can offer teachers. I don't know if that means, and I've sent this email and I'll be fully transparent. That teachers are allowed to work remotely from home on Wednesdays when the schools are being cleaned. There could be things put in place to ensure that we're fulfilling our contractual obligations. And it might help mitigate some childcare concerns that we have. In addition, if people are going on leave. What contingencies are in place in order to hire replacements? I, that's just a question I have and maybe that can't be answered, maybe that needs to be impact bargained. But I kind of wanted to say what a lot of people were thinking. At least members of the STA. So I don't know if that's something that can be addressed tonight, but I thank you for your time. I really hope I can be in front of those kids in a month. I really do. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Unfortunately, it's not anything that we can respond to at this time. This is not the proper forum, but I appreciate your comments. Uh, Alexa Houghton.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, I actually have a number of questions, but I'm going to try to keep them concise. Um, my first question, I guess, might be to Dr. Dutch. Um, it's about the anti-fog masks that have been ordered.
No, your questions would be posed to the chair and then I can determine whether or not they can be answered. Thank you.
Um, so it's about the anti-fog masks that were ordered. Um, I, from my research and I could be wrong, my understanding is that they are not FDA approved. So I was curious as to where they were purchased or how, or if these, I, I think the only ones that are FDA approved are ones that are, um, uh, disposable anti-fog masks. And if those were the, the ones that we purchased or not.
Doctor, I'll allow the question. Dr. Dutch, do you have an, an answer to that? If not, it's okay.
I do not. I'd have to do a little bit of research to, uh, see where they were purchased and whether they're the disposable version or not.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Um, the other question I had was, um, about, uh, I guess the outdoor classrooms. And what happens when it gets cold? We're talking about masks and, you know, mask breaks and talking about, um, having band practice or chorus outside. Or doing all of these things and, um, it gets cold quick here. So question number two.
Well, I think the answer to that is fairly obvious. We're going to do the best that we can, um, with the preparedness that we're doing. Uh, if it gets cold, then probably, I'm sure that there will have to be adjustments made. Uh, I assume that we have, well, should have good weather. Obviously, I would probably more concerned about the elements than I would the cold. Um, like wind and rain, but I think that, uh, all the folks that are working on this plan, um, are doing the best they can. And there are going to be some, uh, difficulties and challenges to overcome. But I, I think that they're in position to, to address those.
Okay, um, I was on the parent meeting for both the high school and for Hathaway. Um, I have an intensive special needs child. Um, I have requested a parent meeting, uh, Zoom meeting for that. I have not been given one yet. And I find it difficult to answer the survey that was sent out without having that, um, option yet. Because I didn't want to take over the Hathaway, um, Zoom with intensive special needs questions that were specific to a smaller population.
Okay, uh, I don't want to get into individual situations. I would contact the principal at your child's school, um, and proceed from there.
I have, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Sorry, Peter, can I just make a comment?
Yes.
I was gonna, I was actually going to ask if we could get a special education update, maybe next Monday. Just, I know that that's something that's in the works and as a special educator, that is such tough place to, um, in this environment to really, um, handle. So I know that that is an ever-changing thing and guidance is still very loose on that from the state. But, um, I, I think it could be helpful for families, whether you have a child in a special education program or not. Just to know how the builds, it's just another piece of the building that kind of flows together and how kids will be in cohorts. You know, I don't know, just from some of the state guidelines. So maybe if we could get like just a, uh, you know, high level kind of overview of how that will look in the buildings for what we know. By next week, if we could do that.
Right, that, I mean, that's for us as, as parents, that's a, a heavy concern. We, and we've contacted, um, new sped director whom I, from what I noticed is not on here. Um, I've contacted her twice, I've contacted, um, uh, Mr. Burkhead. I'm just, I'm looking for a conversation.
I would, I would recommend starting with the principal and, and, and going from there.
I have also done that.
Okay.
I have questions too. I was just curious. I mean, I didn't ask it during the, this, our question time prior to public comment. But I, I do have personal questions about, well, not personal, but, um, district co- questions about, um, IP meetings. And will those be virtual, just details of, of special education that I wasn't sure if parents were with children in special education in Situate. Were having those conversations with our special educators already, or if they've had forums of their own? Or if we would do something here, okay. Just, yeah, that was my general question was have we, how far have we gotten with figuring that out yet? Cause I know that it's a challenge all across the state.
But I think that's reasonable. We'll look for, um, perhaps Mr. Burkhead, the next meeting or two, we could look, um, for a report by the special ed. Absolutely.
And that would be wonderful. We really would appreciate it. However, I, like I said, I don't feel comfortable filling out this form yet.
Until you hear back.
Until we hear back.
Okay.
I, as it was presented to us, and I know a number of parents have this question about it being a commitment. Is it a commitment? Are we tied to this choice when, um, if we fill that out? When, when do we have to tell you whether our children are coming back?
Well, obviously it's going to be easier for the district to plan if we know, um. I will, oh, you put me in a difficult situation here. Mr. Burkhead, I'll, I'll let that question.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a very valid question and I think, um, you know, we have to get these commitments and, and, and honor them. Uh, certainly we'll work with every family as things change and we, you know, we know we're, we're five weeks out. But the reason we're doing it, which appears relatively early, but not for us is because we need to put, prepare classrooms, transportation, cohorts. Um, schedules, a variety of things. And, um, also our remote learning plan. And so if we know where children are in, um, you know, now we can start doing this. The more people that do not respond or we don't have the answers to, it just creates more holes and harder to fill those schedules and transportation and plans in. Uh, so I think that's, that's the importance of that. So, you know, and I think, um, you know, certainly as far as, um, you know, Ms. Houghton, you'll have a response tomorrow. So we'll make sure we get back to you. I apologize if, if no one has. And, uh, you know, and I agree that, um, Ms. Boebert, next meeting would be a, a great way, uh, to give us an update on a special education prog- progress and answer some questions, so.
Right, because I know for sure that my child has a one-to-one and whether or not he comes back is a staffing issue. So if that needs to be addressed before I give it to you. Thank you.
Ms. Houghton, could, again, could you just state your name formally?
Absolutely. My name is Alexa Houghton. I have two children in, um, one in Hathaway and one entering the high school.
Okay, thank you very much.
No problem.
Uh, Melena Davidova. I will ask you to unmute. There you go.
Yeah, hi, um, my name is, uh, Melena Davidova. I have two children, one in, um, middle school and one coming into the high school. Um, I am concerned that, uh, the plan that was approved by the, um, school committee. Had a very well flashed out, uh, hybrid model, but the remote was very lacking. And, um, when it comes to doing this commitment, uh, I feel kind of, um, that there aren't, I don't have enough information. And I, I don't know why the proposal that was approved was so heavy on the hybrid details, but lacking in the remote. So from there, I'm trying to decide what to commit my children to. And, um, I do have a couple of questions. So one of them was, um, when will the remote model be flashed out? And will the district and principals hold a Q and A for families? Um, and the second question is, how can you ensure that the middle school and high school kids can interact with their peers? Even though they are enrolled in two different programs, being remote or hybrid? And that's it.
Well, I think we've heard some of that commentary today from both Dr. Maguire and, and Mr. Beatty. Um, they're working on integrating, uh, the remote only into it. Um, if we have, I guess I'd, not sure how appropriate this is. Um, I'll, I'll hand it to Doc, uh, to Superintendent Burkhead. Um, though I think I'd like to, to ask Dr. Maguire, just to reiterate what she said about, uh, doing additional due diligence on the remote. And how to incorporate, uh, more class, uh, teacher interaction.
Oh, yeah, I think the, you know, the goal of the plan was to get, you know, three modes in place. And decide on which mode was the highest priority or the one we felt best for Situate to put in place. And I think that's where in a month's time, our energy went along with, you know, outlining the remotes, multiple, multiple remotes that we have. So although I understand the frustration, um, I think we should have a good idea by the end of this week or the beginning of next week. Uh, and get more information out to parents into exactly what those plans look like. Um, but a lot of that has to do with, you know, um, getting our staff involved as we talk about who have been volunteering and helping us out. Getting input from them, our coordinators, directors. And so I think, you know, in the phased in, at work we're doing now, that's in this phase, you know, putting the details into all of our plans. So I think you'll see a lot of that from all our models. And I, I do also want to comment, make a comment back on the schedule. I think Mr. Hayes brought it up with the high school schedule. After being a high school principal for six years and overseeing the schedule and overseeing one for a couple of years in assistant principal. I, I just want to, I can't emphasize enough how complex a high school schedule is. Meeting graduation requirements, um, meeting elective needs and wants of, of the kids. I think it's a wise decision by Dr. Maguire and her staff and her team to stick to this current schedule. It meets all the, uh, goals that we need in a hybrid model as well as a remote model. It transitions the best. The simple fact of creating a new schedule and then getting into the details of scheduling the kids. Could take a month or two in and of itself at the high school level. So I, I just wanted to give a little more insight into how complex the high school schedule is and, um, all the complexities that go with that. So I wanted just to validate that, that I believe that was an excellent choice. And it still accomplishes all the needs that we want with our models and allows our students to meet the needs of graduation, um, requirements.
Alright, thank you. Ms. Davidova, I would just recommend you continue to, uh, join the Zooms that, uh, that are offered by your schools.
Okay.
James O'Sullivan.
Hello, I'm sorry, I'm trying to talk over my dishwasher here. Uh, my name is James O'Sullivan. I have been a teacher in Situate for 20 years. Um, currently teaching at Gates. And I, I'm just curious because I hear a lot about metrics and things and I am a fan of the hybrid model. I, like Mr. Fitzgerald, wish that it, there was more conformity because I, my children and my children's mother all have different schedules. Uh, as well, and it's going to be very hard for us to maneuver that. But I am a fan of the hybrid model. My question was about the synchronized learning. Uh, I know that's been a matter of controversy between different groups. Um, and I'm curious if there will be metrics put in place to determine its success or failure. Uh, are we committed to the synchronized learning? Are we plowing through it? Or are we going to have committees and feedback after a couple of weeks, whatever, hey, this is working? Or my child doesn't feel part of the class enough? Or, you know, we want what's best for all of the children. Are we committed to that synchronization? Or could there be a break, a complete break, for instance, between totally remote and totally in class? Or I just wanted to know if there was any plan on evaluating that moving forward. Cause I know we had a staff meeting the other day and having the two different groups, even with a group of adults, it was hard to maneuver. Um, and I know it's going to take some time for the children to get used to it. I'm just curious if there's a timeline or a plan or we're just going to go with it. That's all. Thank you. I appreciate everybody's hard work.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, yeah, I'm, I, my response would just be, obviously there should be some measure of success or failure. I, I'd continue to work with, um, your teachers and your principal to determine what that might look like. That would be my response. Thank you. Uh, M's iPhone is up next.
Hi, this is Michelle Boebert. I just wanted you to know that I am here. I'm under disguise, under M's phone. And, um, in terms of, um, you know, I've had several meetings with parents. Um, the, a lot of the logistical, uh, questions, we don't know, but I'd be very happy to set up a meeting, um, with Ms. Um, Houghton that I just spoke. And also, um, to present next, I just wanted you to know that I am here.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, alright, Hillary's iPhone.
Hi, um, this is Hillary Tyson. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Um, I really just wanted to, um, I have a question, um, in a comment. But I wanted to say that I was super impressed with the principals on this call. Um, I thought it was a great idea to have them attend. I only have one child in an elementary school, so I have no exposure to them. But, um, you can tell that they've put a lot of effort in and I really appreciate that. Um, so thank you. But my, my. But my, my comment slash question is, in looking at the principals' presentations and being a parent of an elementary school child, I was unable to attend the meeting that was held during the day. It was in the middle of the workday, which is fine. I get that everybody has different schedules, but it would have been nice if it was recorded, because I missed a really critical session. I've reached out to the school, and unfortunately, they didn't record it, but it gets kind of back to governance. So governance having some standards around when they are having meetings like this. It would be helpful if there were some standards around that. Like, I heard that some of the schools did record their sessions, and how great was that? So I'm disappointed that I missed such a critical informational session. There was no meeting notes or anything, and so my real comment is it would be nice if there could be some standards across all of the schools, and that we have different sessions that are available at different times, and at the very least, recording those sessions. And that's about it. That's all I wanted to say, and thank you all for your hard work.
Hillary, could you just, sorry, could you just state your last name?
Sure, it's Tyson, T Y S O N.
Okay, thank you. I mean, Superintendent Burkhead, I guess we could just, I'm assuming that if a meeting was not recorded, it was just potentially an oversight. If they are being held by Zoom, we can just hit the record button. I'm assuming it was an oversight.
I don't know that it was an oversight. I did not direct the principals to record them. I think that's, you know, a good point, that we can be consistent, and if that's helpful to parents, certainly we can do that. So it's a point well taken.
Right. If it's appropriate to record, I don't, I don't know, but if it is, either that or offer, and I know that the principals are offering multiple different Zoom meetings, so if they're offering multiple, you know, again, just to her concern, she's not able to attend, she has another option, or other folks have other options in which to view what was discussed.
Absolutely.
Good. Alicia Chick.
Thank you. My question is in regards to the, I have two middle schoolers, and my question's actually in regard to the hybrid, or not into the hybrid, but to the remote learning option. I understand that you guys have been working really hard, and we really appreciate everything that all the teachers and administrators have done, but in regards to the remote learning option, when will we be able to see additional details to really know what that's going to look like? How it's going to be facilitated, and how our students are going to be able to interact with their teachers and peers? We've got this commitment form that's due tomorrow, but you're asking us to make a commitment for something that we don't have all the information in regards to.
That's been brought up several times, and I think that we're, I think it's a valid question or concern that the commitments are due tomorrow. We don't have full, full view on the, on the remote. Superintendent Burkhead, any additional comments here?
Yeah, just that, you know, I kind of explained this, that the, you know, the timeline that we're on, that's what we're focused on now, is putting the details into the phases, into the remote plan. You know, it's a good question. We won't have the answer probably till early next week, and once we do, we'll send it right out to parents.
Peter, could I ask a question?
Sure.
It's a, since, it seems to have come up a couple of times with parents who aren't sure what to, what to choose on the questionnaire, and maybe this is a question better for Mr. Burkhead, but if parents aren't sure if they want to do hybrid or remote, should they choose hybrid? Because it would be easier to schedule kids, it's either, easier if you choose remote after, it would be easier to withdraw them from class. I mean, this is due tomorrow.
Yeah, you know, I would say if they're not comfortable filling it out, they shouldn't. We'll, you know, we've got names and emails. We'll be able to discuss that with individual parents. I'd rather, you know, to value their, you know, if they don't feel comfortable at this point. There's a handful that have shared that tonight. I respect that, and, you know, we'll work with those parents, and, you know, we'll likely do another survey. We've got, let's see, we've got five weeks till kids come in, so we wanted to get the ball rolling, at least to get an idea tonight, and as we all know how things change, there's, there's likely to be another survey. So, you know, I don't want anybody out there to think that this is that they're locked in and that they changed their mind. I hope they don't, that they, I feel a lot of people do know what they're committing to, and those that aren't comfortable, I have no problem with them not filling the survey out now, that we're likely to follow up with them individually, and that we'll likely also have another survey as we get closer for, to get, you know, a more, you know, a more specific and detailed number. This is to get the ball rolling on, you know, bus transportation, class sizes, schedules, and things like that. I know the counselors and eventually in the principals and teachers will be working with their individual students as they commit to schedules, so we'll also be talking to the students and parents at that time as well. So I think we have a lot of levels to still go and plenty of time, so I think it's a valid question, Ms. Lindblom. But I also think that I'd rather have concrete, an answer from the parents where they stand now, and if they, if they're not comfortable answering that, it's okay to leave it blank, and we'll make sure we follow up with them at another time.
Great, thank you very much. I know this is a public comment here. I don't want to make this an all-night affair. We've had, this is now roughly our fourth meeting about school reopenings. A lot of information out there, a lot of work still to be done. Just want to limit some of these, some of these questions if possible, and just what I meant to do is state our protocol again as it relates to our school committee meeting. The school committee meeting is a meeting of the school committee that is held in public. It's not a public meeting. We'll make every effort to ensure that the committee meetings are effective and efficient. Just want to reiterate that at this time. Carrie Hanigan.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi, Carrie Hanigan. I will have three students at Cushing, and my question is, we got an email last week about the loner Chromebooks, and I know it had mentioned, you know, at this time, we can supply possibly up to two loners, but for now, please limit your request to one. I'm just wondering, I mean, I know that you obviously don't know right now how many need order or have come in, and how many families are going to need them, but do we have any sort of timeframe? So, I mean, I know I would have to try to figure out, even if we were, you know, to get one loner, a timeframe of, you know, how I have to purchase two more.
Superintendent Burkhead.
I think we'll, we're going to commit to getting everybody that needs a computer, a computer. So, again, just in the process of getting the, you know, the numbers initially, on making sure we had enough in the original order, one or two per family, and then moving on from there. So I think that, I want everybody out there to know that everybody that needs, every child that needs a computer will get one. So we'll work with individual parents on the, you know, ones that need more than one. So just want you to feel comfortable knowing that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Guzek, Guzek, sorry.
Hi there. It's Melissa Guzek, actually. I'm on my husband's phone. I'd just like to say really quickly, if you all can hear me, thank you so much. Superintendent Burkhead, all of you, school committee, principals, my goodness, the work you're doing is tireless, and we appreciate you, and we see how hard you're working. And I would like to just reiterate what Superintendent Burkhead said earlier about the, the, answering the form. Sometimes no answer is your answer, and so if you need to take a minute and tap the brakes and not answer that survey, I fully support that and say it's okay to wait, and thank you all for all you're, you're doing. Just want to put that on the record. Melissa Guzek, 593 Country Way. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much for your comments. All right, that looks like it will wrap up the public comment statement or questions on the agenda. Thank you all for those questions. I know that some of you probably want to ask more. But again, we've had several opportunities for questions, and principals are now offering regular Zooms that you could ask some of those very specific questions as it relates to your, your children. Moving on, there is no correspondence to the school committee. The very exciting section now, warrants. Dr. Bob Dutch, who will outline our warrants.
Okay. So the most recent warrant was S200813. Total dollar amount was $205,663.51. It was signed by school committee member Lindblom. I'll go through the larger items rather than reading every single line item here. Van purchase of $88,332. We purchased two vans to transport our Metco students ourselves. Excuse me, special ed students. Flooring for the library, $10,000 deposit, and then our local education account of $104,431.51. Large ticket items there. For private school tuition of $10,408.80. Collaborative tuition, $5,230. Electric utilities, $28,748.41. Central administration expense for the tents, $29,466.82. Contract service, rubbish removal, $8,899.56. Graduation, $3,976. Situate High School Niasg dues, $4,125. So those are the larger ticketed items.
Great, thank you. And I'm not sure you have the answer to this, but just so that those are, they're listening intently. Those two special ed vans, I know this is before your time, but that was part of the capital plan approved by the town. So it doesn't come out of our operating budget, but rather the capital plan of the town.
Correct, which is why it's a separate item above the LEA budget.
Great, thank you. I just think that that helps people understand a little bit. And again, that, that's a result of the school committee and the district's work over the past 12 months to develop capital plan, get approved by the town, and get those dollars to purchase the van. So we are now done with that. That's.
And the same is true with the flooring for the library. That was a capital expenditure approved by the town.
Great, thank you very much. You're at the tail end. Now you get to work on our capital plan going forward.
Sounds good.
Can I ask a capital plan question, Peter?
Yes.
One of the items on there was the smoke detectors and things for the Cushing and Hatherley Elementary, which would be really awesome to have before school starts. Any updates on when that could be happening?
I don't know the answer to that. I'd have, I've got to look back at that plan that was approved this past spring. Actually, June, and then talk to Mr. Dillon to see if there's a plan in place for installation.
Great, thank you.
I'll get back to you on it.
Thanks, perfect.
Any other questions for Dr. Dutch? All right, any other business? Any school committee members, any other business you want to discuss?
Nope.
No, future agenda items. Our next meeting is next Monday, 6 o'clock via Zoom, and if this Facebook Live works, it will be there as well. We will have policy subcommittee draft one potentially for next week, and those classroom videos that Seth is hoping to put together for next Monday as well. Other than that, anyone else have any other agenda items? All right. So do I have a motion to adjourn at 7:55?
So moved.
Motion by Hayes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Brandalini. Gates, yes. Lindblom?
Yes.
Wrong.
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Brandalini?
Yes.
Our meeting is now adjourned, 7:55.
There you go.